Call this meeting in order tonight on the mayor and council on July ninth, twenty twenty four. We're going to have the invocation by Reverend Michael Jackson from Compliments Missionary Baptist Church and then followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, brother Mike.
I thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Gracious eternal God, our Father, Lord, we thank you now again for tonight. We thank you for our mayor and we thank you for our council and all of our city officials and those who serve in whatever capacity they serve in. Now, God, I ask that you intervene into this meeting tonight. Have your way, God. Continue to be with us as we continue to better and beautify our city. Continue to walk with us each and every day. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. All of God's children say amen.
Amen. I feel maybe we need to say something. I didn't. We have streets of religion and so well to focus that as one nation, come here, our individual, but the seemingly just follow.
That's right. All right, we'll get going here. We'll change things up just a little bit for you tonight on from off of the paper. So first of all, we're going to do employee recognition, marketing communications intern, Cassie Robinson.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city of LaGrange occasionally provides internships to teach students about local government and give them a glimpse into the professional world. This past year, we partnered with Think Academy and their work-based learning program to create an internship within the marketing and communications department. By spending the entire school year with us, God helper, our intern Cassie Robinson has been able to learn the work ethic, soft skills, and professionalism needed to be a full-time employer of the city of LaGrange. Special thank you to Adam Spies, who led the internship program, Olivia Johnson, Philip Sledge, and Jeremy Andrews for providing guidance to Cassie during this time. And to tell you more about her experience within the city of LaGrange Marketing Communications Department, I'd like to introduce to you Cassie Robinson, who will be giving you a presentation through PowerPoint.
All right, thank you very much. Hello, my name is Cassie Robinson. I'm a rising senior at LaGrange High School, and I did work-based learning through Think College and Career Academy. I interned at the city of LaGrange's marketing and communications department since August of 2023 to May 2024. Before I even started my internship, I only had an idea of what marketing and communications entailed. Now I understand there is so much dedication and hard work that goes into the process of any and all projects we face. I had great mentors with an abundance of experiences and valuable advice. Starting out, I had trouble with the amount of information that I put on the first couple of graphics, but given an opportunity to listen to constructive criticism, and I applied it to my work and it matured. I got to be a part of helping the LaGrange Youth Council Youth Symposium, and then I got to take pictures of the dogs and edit for the LaGrange Animal Shelter. I learned how to professionally compose emails and communicate with other departments using industry-standard software. I was a part of pitching, making graphics, taking photos, and mapping out the social media campaign for the city of LaGrange's birthday scavenger hut. And another social media campaign I enjoyed working for was for Black History Month. I learned how to write captions for social media posts that were informational and expanded on the graphic itself. It was difficult, but it pushed me out of my comfort zone, and because of that, I learned how to become better. For the t-shirt designs, I took inspiration from the previous Leave LaGrange Better Than We Founded logo and created a new design. We ordered the shirts that would be comfortable and practical for anyone that works at the city of LaGrange to wear. And overall, I learned many professional skills for the field of work that I want to be in in the future. And I strengthened myself and I strengthened my soft skills that will help me anywhere I go and that will help anyone else where they go. Thank you, mayor and council members, for this program and opportunity to be in it. And once again, thank you for the marketing communications department that took me in and taught me a lot of things that I wouldn't have gotten just at school from those marketing communications program, but the real industry.
We look forward to seeing more great things from you in the future.
My faith in humanity has been restored. Thank you.
I got to back up just one minute. We forgot to approve the council minutes held on June 27th, 2024.
Motion. Motion. What?
Yeah, the second motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, really? Okay, good.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, pass unanimously. All right, now we can move on. We need, we'll move this Hill Daniel with Optimist Club of LaGrange, LaGrange firefighter and Officer of the Year. Is there, is there anybody back there in the back that needs to come, to come inside?
I will.
I see, I see a couple of them more firemen and police officers back there. Make sure y'all all get in.
Anyway. All right.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Hill Daniel. I'm the vice president of the Optimist Club of LaGrange, and on behalf of our club, I'd like to thank the city council for this opportunity to come be before you guys today. 1951, the Optimist Club of LaGrange was founded by several prominent members of our community, and in 1965, Optimist International created the Respect for Law Program. The Respect for Law Program was, came from a meeting with J. Edgar Hoover and the president of Optimist International at the time. And Optimist International wanted to create an award that could be used by local organizations to highlight the good work local law enforcement does in the communities all over the world. Since the inception of this Respect for Law Program, it's been an important part of the LaGrange Optimist Club. Originally, the club only recognized members of the LaGrange Police Department and Troup County Sheriff, but following the events of September 11th, the club felt it was important to recognize members of the fire department as well. Since then, this program has been an important highlight, has been a highlight of our club's annual agenda, and it is an honor to work with the police and fire chief to recognize one of our own hard-working public servants that go above and beyond in their line of duty. The individuals that we will recognize today truly are making LaGrange a brighter, more optimistic place for our youth. So would anybody with the police department be willing to come up here and help me out in presenting our Officer of the Year? Going to work every day is always better when you enjoy the people that you work with and the individual that we're recognizing today from the city police department is that kind of person. Returning to the agency in August of 2023, this individual has never stopped looking for more ways to help the members of their community or his peers. This individual has a wealth of knowledge and expertise in the area of traffic enforcement and works tirelessly to ensure that our streets are safe for everyone that uses them. In addition, this individual has completed all the requirements for promotion to sergeant and has recently been appointed to the position of Field Training Officer. Careful Wesley Engel is truly an essential member of our police force, and our community and Optimist Club is happy to recognize him as the city of LaGrange Police Officer of the Year.
Very good. Hello, folks. Shored by Wes. You know, I got here about a year ago in April, and of course, we were shorthanded, always needing help, and you know, when you hire somebody, you always take a chance because you don't know how it's going to work out one way or the other, honest. But I kept hearing Wesley Engel, Wesley Engel, Wesley Engel. So finally, I finally get a phone call and this Wesley Engel wants to come talk to me. So he comes in, he sits down, and he tells me about his past and his history and everything. Then I figure, well, you know, what, hey, we'll take a shot. Besides, at that point, I think I had like 39 people I could blame it on if I made them mistake because they didn't all get to talk about it. But great police officer, good friend, tremendous asset to the community, same smile you see now, you see whether he's dealing with pleasant things or unpleasant, never makes anything differ. So we're very glad to have him back. Thank you much.
All right, and Chief Rettles. Before starting his firefighting career in Columbus, our firefighter of the year served for four years in the Marine Corps. In Columbus, this individual made a point to better himself and his peers and his unit by completing and obtaining a plethora of certifications that we really just don't even have time to list off right now. When joining the police LaGrange Department in 2021, this individual continued with the same dedication. This individual serves the people of LaGrange every day by utilizing his vast experience and skills. He primes those that he works with in the department, the fire department as a whole. Firefighter Jordan Morrison is the LaGrange Fire Department. The LaGrange Fire Department is better off for having someone like you within its ranks, and the city is lucky to have you looking after it. Congratulations. Anything you'd like to add to it?
Congratulations. But Jordan, just like all the men and women that work for the Grand Fire Department, he's dedicated to serving citizens and serving the department. So when he came, when it came to us from Columbus, we knew we were going to access personnel, and he's continued to improve in himself. Like you say, he got a plethora of certifications that we wouldn't just stay here all night and list, but he's just one of those dedicated men and women that we do have working for the Grand Fire Department. So I do thank him for his service.
Again, we very much appreciate this opportunity to, to recognize our firefighters and our police officers for everything that we do. This really is a highlight for the Optimist Club every single year. We very much look forward to it. We've got a small delegation of our club members here, so President Ralph Howard right over there helped present the award. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And if any of y'all men or women working, helping protect city of LaGrange need to leave, y'all are welcome to.
I got a warning there. Social.
Obviously got it for an accident, and then I was fed up with America's country.
I just raised my television. Yeah, I think it's all available to the cabinet. So I'd be tempted to try it. Wesley, you got there with the. I'm like, ask this student. I think it's all available to the cabinet. So I'd be tempted to try it. Wesley, you got there with the. Yeah, I think it's all available to the cabinet. So I'd be tempted to try it. Wesley, you got there with the.
All right, we'll go ahead and get, we'll go ahead and keep moving along. Employee, no more employee recognitions, public hearings. We have a public hearing on UDO text amendment to delete the extended public hearing period for halfway houses. Is there anyone in council chambers that wants to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I declare that public meeting closed. Public hearing. UDO text amendment to provide screening of heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and other mechanical utility equipment shall apply only, shall apply to commercial and industrial projects. Is there anyone who want to speak against or for that public hearing? Seeing none, I declare that public hearing closed. Under petitions and communications, acceptance of water and sewer infrastructure and pump station within Silverton Town Homes Development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you all recall, we spoke about this this morning during the work session. This is the infrastructure and also pump station that is located within the Silverton Town Home Development, which is within the Bryant Lake subdivision, and this will be accepted upon contingent of the documents that we spoke about this morning, which will be the warranty for the pump station to be turned, turned over to us. We do have a reason that will be turned over to us because we just accepted phase one of this back in September of 2023.
Okay, and action out for tonight?
Which is be to accept the infrastructure water.
You got a motion? Motion and a second, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Pass unanimously. All right, also have acceptance of water and sewer infrastructure within the Rockland Homes, Town Homes Development Phase 1B and 1C.
Yes, sir. Again, Mr. Mayor, this is standard operating procedures. Whenever subdivision comes to us for final plat approval, we have to accept the water lines, sewer lines within that division. What we're accepting, asking you to accept tonight is the water lines and sewer lines, which is in phase 1B and 1C. This is development on Hamilton Road, which was the American, old American Legion Golf Course. All documents have been turned to us for warranty. We will get the access and easement agreement signed after the plat has been signed off. So if it's your pleasure, you can go ahead and approve this one tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept this. Second?
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I got one question right, and that's totally off page with it. Silverton Homes, do they own any of the, those adjacent properties or anything up there, off Hamilton Road with this Rockland Homes? Are they related to them in any kind of way?
No, no. Silverton is within Bryant Lake, and then like I say, Rockland is the old American Legion Golf Course, those two different subdivisions.
Both of those, I know that's two parts.
No, no, no. Rockland only doing, are only doing the Town Home, which is the 1801 Hamilton Road, Crestview Vista, the apartments at 1705 Hamilton Road. So it's two separate developments.
Someone asked me that question, so I'll just try to get clarification on it. So Silverton just over style and Bryant Lake, nothing to do on Hamilton Road?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Pass unanimously. City manager report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed this morning, the financial statements for June 2024 were distributed, and we were proud to say that we ended the fiscal year in positive territory, so it was a good year financially for the city. You also received the report for payment of bills over $5,000, $5,000. I did want to respond to Ms. Pippin's question about the temporary services that we were paying for, and that's going to pay for animal control, recycle center, sanitation, an IT intern that's working in IT for the summer. And then also, we pay our retirees through the temp agency that are doing some work like in code enforcement and also down at the police department. So those are the current people that are, that are being paid through the temp agency right now, so I wanted to get that answer to you. Also, I mentioned this morning, I wanted to give kudos again to our accounting department for receiving an award for achievement of excellence in financial reporting from the Governmental Finance Officers Association. It's a lot of work that goes into the audit and the other financial reports that the city does, and the accounting staff does a great job of that under Lisa Duke's direction. And then last but not least, Ms. Pippin also asked about the ability for citizens to report problems and make suggestions and file complaints and things like that. And I talked with Katie, I'm still a little bit of her thunder, because she's not missing it, it's the end of the, end of the meeting, but there is on the new website a, a button for being able to, to submit those suggestions and complaints to the city, and they come to, unless, so they can be distributed and, and taken care of. So that is part of the new website, and Katie will be touching on that again in just a few minutes. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. First reading of orders, UDO, UDO text amendment to delete the extended public hearing period for halfway houses.
In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the city so as to remove special public hearing requirements for facilities for treatment of drug dependency, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, move on. UDO text amendment to provide screening of heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and other mechanical utility equipment shall only apply to commercial and industrial projects.
In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning ordinance of the city in order to modify screening requirements for HVAC and other mechanical equipment, to provide such screening is only required for commercial and industrial buildings and developments, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Second reading of orders is to modify the membership of the youth advisory council.
In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the codes, to modify the membership of the youth advisory council, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Take a motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Hold it off. What are we approving again?
We're approving to take the youth council from '24 to '32.
Okay.
We're adding eight more, eight more members on.
Now, the only reason why I ask that question is because I could, why is the first reading of these ordinances, why are they, why are they first? Certainly be second by now?
That was first read a couple of meetings ago. It was when we had a jillion ordinances, and that when, the second reading of that just got lost in the shuffle and didn't get.
Okay, because I was, I distinctly remember us going over that, and then I'm like, this is the second time I'm hearing this.
It was a mistake by we, your staff.
Okay, my bad. I'm sorry. I'm just getting back into town. Thank you for the clarification. Continue.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Pass unanimously.
Oh, paying attention.
You're paying attention. That's a good catch. All right, now, under delegations, we have Ms. Deborah Ashley.
Creek, creek.
Creek, creek. And I don't see Ms. Evie Kettler, so she has.
Oh. Hope she feels better. How are you?
I'm, I'm okay. Been better, but I'm okay.
Good to see you.
Deborah Ashley, I live at 212 Whitaker Street. I fear today that I asked you to take whatever measures it is to change my street that has become a nightmare. I have came here for many years asking for help, and I felt it was time to reach out to you again. I have faith you will make.
Thanks, Dallas Lake.
I have faith that you'll make a difference now. Our neighborhood has become unsafe health-wise, and it's time to clean up these filthy properties that are owned by landlords that don't care. It brings our property values down, and no one in their right mind would want to live on Whitaker Street. My story is just one of many of a lot of areas in town. We have, my street is an embarrassment. We have let the crime move in with filth and lawlessness for too long. Living next door to a nightmare will drive you crazy with disgust. I want to bring my street back to what it used to be, decent. Would you want to live like this? I have been made to put up with not much being done for too long. I pray that when you see my pictures, that you will do what is right to clean up our city, one street at a time. I want to be treated with respect, and I have made, had more disappointments about making things better than you can imagine. My husband died last November, and it's not pleasant living, trying to deal with the loss and trying to survive. I would like to be informed of how the city will plan to make this a better town, better than before. My neighborhood used to be decent, and I want my neighborhood back to be, and be treated as though you lived on it. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm asking you to start to make a difference for a better city to live in for us all. I am tired of living in fear for my life. I need help from you to change the ways we do business. It needs to work for all of us. And I'm gonna give you my pictures and a letter from my daughter, let you know how serious this is. This went on too long. I need your help, and I need it now. No one should have to go through what I have had to put up with. Y'all don't even want to drive down my street. It's horrible. Crime has took over. The thugs think they can just do anything they want to, and we have let them. Crime is getting outrageous in LaGrange. They streets you don't even want to go down. And we don't want this to be the look of LaGrange. We need to do something to make it better.
So has any council got any questions for Ms. Deborah?
You know, we got staff here also that we can. This to the attention of the council in the city before.
For many years.
For many years. I guess my only question is, Jim, Mayor Jim, is what was, what was done when she bought her prior complaints and stuff to the previous administration?
And I couldn't answer that, but I think we probably got some city staff here that probably can speak to that.
I'd like to acknowledge my lady. She was, before we get done. I'm like, speaking of, definitely have done it, y'all. I told them to know that, too. He wrote the citation, this way, tickets. So he's done it, y'all.
And I'm speaking of the whole neighborhood.
So just as a little bit of context and backdrop, I've only been in my position that I'm currently in, I work in enforcement for a couple of months, so I can't speak to a place like Councilman Child's Ass, previous administrations and, and previous employees. What I can tell you is that one of my first meetings when I took this position was with the city attorney and city manager. We discussed a fairly healthy budget to clean up the streets of LaGrange, whether that be through issuing citations, demolition of properties. We've conducted, conducted a windshield survey that we started to go back through strategically and pick out houses, and we've got about 20 to 25 that we have our sites on specifically related to Whitaker Street. And I'll let Mr. Terry speak to the specifics about the citations. That was brought to my attention pretty quickly, did a ride by, it's clearly an issue. I met with Ms. Ms. Ashley, myself and Chief Five Ash did, along with Evie Kettler. We discussed several things with her to include that we would start issuing citations and summons and seek additional measures as we could, but we were looking at a two-week to six-month timeframe, best case, worst case scenario, because we do have to allow them the opportunities. Again, I can't speak to what has happened for me, and I also explained to her in great detail that I felt like the entire street was in, in stages of disrepair and filth, and I wanted to work on the street before I targeted one particular resident. Since that time, notice of violations have been issued to several, and I'll let them speak to the specifics, several residents on, on Whitaker Street. Since that time, most of them have got pretty close to compliance in terms of unsightly growth, cleaning up their yards, et cetera. And specifically, and again, Mr. Terry, you can come up here. Mr. Timothy Hill's been written numerous citations. His stance is, we can write all he'll like, all we like, he's going to pay the fine and continue to live how he sees fit to do so. I'm not saying that we're done with the problem, but now we're in the part where we can see you have issued citations, or we're going to have to think outside the box, maybe you face some amendments to some city ordinances, voting for, to give them a little bit more teeth. And if you have questions about specifics on citations and things like that, Mr. Terry Brooks, all his information.
I have a question. Are the citations issued to the tenant or the landlord?
In this case, tenant.
The tenant.
Why aren't they issued to the owner of the property?
Because once you, once you're the tenant, that's your property, you pay your rent that month, that's your property for that month.
Does the owner get a copy of them?
The owner, who gets, the person that will write the notice of violation or citation to, that's who we deliver, deliver to, because technically, when you're ready to dwelling, when you pay your rent for that month, that's your dwelling, you know? The landlord does not have any, any say-so but for that month.
Is that based on the way our code is written or state law, or is that the way we're doing things?
No, no. No. That was the way.
I'd like to know the answer to that.
If there were, if there were issues with the structure itself, then potentially we would seek.
Yeah.
The landlord.
The question is, what's the judge saying when you keep getting the same fence, you keep cutting back front?
Well, I would, I would like to tell you that the fines have gone up, but I can't, I can't tell you that for sure.
There's, there's been cars in some residents' homes in La Grange, and I mean, code enforcement, they immediately came there, and they had to move that car, but they get fined, some kind of huge fine. With everything that's in that yard, what I see, I see, ain't nothing else we can do that's got no teeth to make him clean, that stuff up, all that stuff up, all that. Well, all these cars, here's a race car, which that does not fall under, out of the city. I mean, you can call that an example. I'm taking, I'm throwing everything. He has, he has it covered, he doesn't have, he doesn't have, you know, water and things where it can get water to breed insects and that type thing, you know? But there's the one of all, which is called Hill Standard, and, and that's the one that we apply to this, where your property's got to be maintained, or it can't be a breeding ground, pets and insects and that type of thing. So that's, and Mr. Mr. Hall is, has made some progress, there's a lot to be made, but he has made some progress. And, and I, I constantly go by there and, and talk to him to make sure, you know? I went by, early this week, talked with the, the upper, and I was told, told him, I says, look, you know, we need, we need to move forward, you know? He, he made a little fibers from the last time, but it's still a long way to go, you know?
And I will go a step further than that, the way some of our ordinances are written, they're pretty restrictive in terms to items that can be left out, that aren't considered to be refuge and trash, or unsightly growth. It specifically details grass. I've got a kudzu complaint right now, the grass is cut. Kudzu's a little out of whack, but I mean, where, where are we at in terms of actually having some sort of prosecutable case? And you cut all the kudzu, we're dealing with an issue now where they cut all the undergrowth back, and we have an erosion problem. So, it's, we're doing a lot of balancing and a lot of tiptoeing, but relative to this case, certainly in the last couple of months, Mr. Hill has not been under the radar, he's been issued summons and citations. And so, we'll, we'll see, you'll have another court date coming up with the last handful of tickets that we wrote him, and I'll be able to answer, I'll be able to answer the fines questions a little bit more, because when he pulls those fines, he'll see that he, this is, this is not his first time before the court.
I've said that y'all roll the trouble, Judge.
You're dead weight.
Next, remind him this is, yes, yes. You say it's not a breeding ground to like grow it.
It probably can't become a breeding ground, you know, with, with like overgrowth and, you know, and things like that, or trash, or, you know, that, that's what aren't the health standard, you know?
He knows now. Ask. Call for the screen. We have to just.
Ms. Ashley.
Ms. Ashley, have you experienced any kind of up teeth, or any extra rats, or rodents, or anything on your property?
Lips and snakes.
So, I'm, I'm gonna ask that question.
How often do you come?
How often do you come? Well, I go by there and talk with him, I've been right here since December, February, just following up, making sure he's moving stuff and cleaning stuff up, you know, April, May, June, I was just constantly trying to, to pride him along to get this stuff.
What about the thars that don't really, I read.
Oh, no, whoa. I'm, fifteen, I know.
I would like specifically to know exactly which codes he's writing, which written citations under, and what status is of those.
Health standards and garbage collection, uh, prices.
Okay, well, I want specifics, I want to know specifics and the dates over the course of time.
Health standard and garbage collection.
Anything. I, with the residential, with the trash and garbage on, on the, the health standard covers a broader basis with, with that, you know? And, but he, his cars, he has a, he has a, like a, some kind of race truck, that doesn't fall under that thing, but his other vehicles that he had there have valid tag and insurance. And so, if they valid tag and insurance that they run, that we don't, you know, it doesn't matter how many cars he has, okay?
We'll get to that.
I have to start.
So, so, Whittaker Street is a very interesting street, because it's like a lot of streets that were on the peripheral of the city originally, they were actually county roads. And they don't have curbsage. So, when it comes time for trash pickup, and I think this is the point that everyone's missing, when it comes time for trash pickup, there's no place to put your large refuge.
Your type of center.
So a lot of times, it sits in your yard.
Okay.
I'm thinking, because, and I've noticed this problem, and same thing in the Bell Line community, I dare I say, Whittaker Street didn't even get paved to maybe 15 years ago? Maybe 20? It was before that, it was, it was dirt road.
Thank you.
We've always had culverts on the side of the road, which make it difficult to put trash in a covert for the city to come by and pick up. So, to miss that, you, you don't have the same, you don't have the same convenience that you have in a curbed city. It's just not there, because you have a driveway, you have culverts, a roadway that really isn't wide enough for two cars. So, trash pickup becomes a challenge. So that could explain why some of it is still on his residence. Could, it could. And historically, I was here when we did the voluminous ordinance, we actually changed city ordinances behind the complaints from Ms. Ashley, and I appreciate that, there were some things that we need to take care of, but I think more so than anything else, what we really need to take care of is Whittaker Street. I, I find it very disrespectful for us as a city, an international city, to target individuals. We can field complaints all day long, but to target individuals for their shortcomings, what we as a city have dropped the ball. We don't cut the culverts, we're not making any plans to widen the roadway, we're not trying to add any amenities to bring them up to the same spec as curbed cities, as, as curbed city streets that we have in our city, but yet they have to adhere to the same practices. So in 15, 20 years of this street being, of this roadway, being in the city, what has the city of La Grange done, amenity wise, to make it better? Dare I say, absolutely nothing other than paving.
All right.
Hold on, no, no, I, I don't, you guys can't. So, what, what I'm suggesting is, I would like to think in outside the box, how difficult would it be to have a mediator, sit down with the two residents, mediate this, come to some sort of mutual understanding? Number one, it improved the health of the relationship of the neighbors in the community, and that way, maybe that'll keep the city from being the strong arm in what I perceive to be a Hatfield McCoy situation. We need somebody to bring these two together, and, and sit down and talk out their differences, and work together, because I'm sure if the lines of communication can be restored, there can be a solution without a judge. And maybe the judge would recommend that. I don't know. Judges have that power, if I.
Probably not in municipal court.
Okay.
I'm, question fifteen. What is the next step beyond the citations within, I mean, what is within the current things without changing anything? What are the, what, what are the steps, like, like somebody can, is, is there another step? I'm just curious.
You correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Todd, but these are civil summons, essentially, they're code violations. If he comes in and pays the fine, then we go out in seven days, 10 days, 30 days, write him another one, he comes in, pays the fine, and we're just putting another court in the mirror, go around until we do something that gives it some teeth.
But there's nothing further within the law that they got?
I mean, and, I'm, at some, at some point, we don't know the specifics about the numbers and the dates, at some point, an economic incentive.
Yikes.
Now, not in every case.
You know what I'm saying?
But I would suggest, as you said, you'd like to see the numbers and the dates, and let's compile all that, and maybe have some practical things to discuss instead of theory.
How can the health standard citations ever get bigger? That's just a hell of a.
That's what we asked.
Just one, just one health standard, the only one.
You said layer before.
Well, the reason is, is he's always, when I go with, he would, he would clean up. And Mr. Hall, he's kind of a, I guess you can, that's kind of a board, you know, he, he'll clean up, and then two months later, or a month later, he'll, he'll, he'll bring some more stuff, you know, it's just, it's just kind of a, you know, a cycle with, you know, he standard break up, stuff. He'll, he'll remove stuff and clean up, and then he'll, then some, then some more stuff will come back, you know? There's different, different things, you know? I mean, I think, I think we should at least, you know, it's our enough stuff. And, and I was, Officer Face had issued notice citations when it was her zone, you know?
And I think that's important to know, too, and I'm not saying anything about anybody that stood in our position before. I'm new to this game, the last couple of months, Mr. Todd, to tell you, my feet hadn't stopped running since I've been here, and Jason Webb is a huge part of that, but this crew that stands before you is not the same crew that was in here even 90 days ago, in terms of assignments and zones and things like that. So, and again, we met with Ms. Ashley, myself and Chief Five Ash, and we, we discussed at length timetables, whether it's an eyesore or not, he's got rights, we can walk up and him tell us to, we don't, we're not welcome on his property anytime. So now we're back to getting a civil search warrant, team to go in and write the citations. So there's, I mean, I understand the frustration, and for the road, it is.
This, this is really not an issue for the council, other than the city manager opposing stricter ordinances, this is, we are aware, and they're saying they're gonna do their best to fix it. We gotta rely on the city manager to handle this, whatever it takes.
It's just a revolving dumpster.
It may be, it may continue, but what you see is got to do within the law.
I have reached out, Mr. Gaskin, it has done no good.
Captain Charles, to answer the question to you, as far as citations go, citations have been issued, but there's been more notice of violations, which gives them the, beyond the shadow of doubt, takes a lot of time to fix the problem. So, in that time span that we give him, he has negated, and he has resolved the majority of what we asked him to do through notice of violations. Citation's only given when he appropriately does not go along with what we, what we asking you to notice of, he's had multiple notice violations, and he complies with the majority of the times, to what we asked him to do. The citation's only given as a last resort, I mean, when he fails to, 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 everything we need to do in a, in those options.
I see.
Then he starts to boss his own.
Sounds like we just need to have staff look into this a little bit more, and let's see if there's some.
Which I've already been some, all of the assistance. Y'all, civic, verbiage, and I was going with the solicitor, Mr. Todd, to an extent, so I'm compiling all that so that we can table something more strict going forward, but again, that's.
Okay. Well, we appreciate what y'all are doing, and Ms. Deborah's just gonna take a little time, and I know you're.
I just want my neighborhood to be like y'all's neighborhood.
I understand, and we appreciate you coming.
We appreciate it. I should be treated just as equal.
You, you're right, and we, and we heard you, and we, we will, we will have staff look into this, and we're, we may have to, do some ordinances to make it have teeth, but.
Sure.
We appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
Code, tell you what's it, code and all that kind of stuff, expense when it comes to housing and all this kind of stuff, it's very bad in my property, and I see some deflo of a condition around here, so I just want you guys to know that I was not, my frustration was, and neither one of you guys, and I thank you guys for the job that you do.
I appreciate it. And I grew up, I wanna say that too, that it was not, I'm not asking for the real estate stuff, because I need to know what we, what we might need to change, because I agree with what you're saying, that if it takes street by street, house by house, there's a one that needs to be cleaned up.
Right. Thank you, thank y'all, thank y'all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna come up over here for Mr. Hall. Hall or Hill?
Hall.
Hall, Mr. Hall.
I'll be the Charles, boss something, see him, but then, excuse the way I'm dressed, and the code officials start doing their job, and I'm gonna tell you what's going on, and then I'm done, y'all can do what y'all wanna do. She started this, cause this house was wanted for a month and a day. I used to keep my yard neat, I used to fix her cars for free and everything. Her husband died, she accused that killing him. Then she turned around and said, I'm a drug dealer, which we're going to court home, and I do clean my yard up, but they take them on my property no more, it's posted. If they wanna come, y'all gotta spend the money for a warrant. My yard is sealed, you cannot see it from the road. The law, and y'all's own ordinance states that if you cannot see it from the road, you can't come on my property if you can't see it. My property's sealed. This lady just called, looked at your records, five hundred trunks in 10 years. They tell me to burn my trash, clean up and burn. I do it, she calls the fire department. They tell me to pick up trash and put it on the side of the road. I do it, she calls the city. I've got video of her blowing trash in my yard, burning it, and then calls the code officials and give you a ticket. There's no law to stop her blowing trash in my yard. So what do y'all want me to do? I mean, she's burning in my yard, I got video.
See.
I've got video of her calling police about my dogs barking. They said after two hours, never barked. So, they tell her, she goes, you're lying about it, take it. I got video of her walking from her fence, agitating my dogs. So now, y'all tell me about it, and my yard, everything I got, insured. It's my law, it's a crack, you know what I'm saying? Might not be the police, this night, I paid for it, I worked, I worked a hundred hours a week.
That's it.
I'm not gonna let nobody dictate to me. I'll pay everything you got me. I'm setting on cleaning it, I will pay the fine. Until she leaves me alone, I'm gonna keep paying fines. I just wanna be left alone, not agitated. She called the police.
In the rodents, or snakes, or anything?
I've got 50 cats, where is it gonna be any rats? There's 50 cats, they're not mine, those are others', but I feed all these out, I take care of them. There's no rats gonna be around 50 cats, I mean, let me be honest.
Mr. Hall, we appreciate it, I allowed you to speak just out of goodness, though.
Can I present?
We're not here to try cases.
I know that, understating, thanks, and I appreciate code officials are being done. Oh, you know that.
All right, thank you.
If he has somebody calling foul, when it's time, in 10 years, that's for devils.
Okay.
It makes you do something.
Ms. May, sure, you got any good news for us?
I did, I think I gave them some favors.
We give you a bunch of highlights, the city, the city has a new updated website that you see on your screens, our website has been revamped to provide easier accessibility, more transparency for our community. So you're gonna see better navigation, as it provides language translation, accessibility features. One feature that we're really excited to offer our residents, is a way to put in your address at the bottom, and find out who your elected leader is, your representative, your voting location, and your trash day. So that's something, it's at the very bottom of the website. Go up just a little bit. One more, one more, there you go, that's it right there. So if you put 200 Ridley Avenue, it'll pop up who your representative is, and where you vote, and your trash day. And you could even click on the contact us, that's at the top and at the bottom, your concerns will go straight to Melissa, our city clerk. So a big thank you to Adam Spees, our creative director, who is leading, he led this project, it looks really good, we're gonna continually update it, and we have lots of more things that we're gonna put on the website, so really excited about it, it's now la grangega.gov.
All right.
Oh, is it?
Yes. They went from Ford to Gaff.
Good, cool.
All right, we're adjourned.